This is a regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, April the 11th. Please stand for our invocation led by Reverend Eugene Perry, St. Louis Street Missionary Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Is he present? If not, we're going to ask Pastor Clark that you might come down and give us a word of prayer this morning.
Lord, I pray. You tell God I follow, Lord. God, we've come before you this morning with thanksgiving and with praise. For all we come praying for this city, for this council, for the most greater staff of this Mobile. We ask your blessing that we are upon this meeting today. That God lead us and guide us into what you would have us to do. It is in the perfect name of Jesus that we do pray. Amen.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'd like to thank Pastor Clark from the First Baptist Church of Baltimore Street for coming down and giving us our prayer this morning. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, at this time, please put on the off of the vibrator position, the off of the vibrator position. And the person designed to address the council must sign and indicating the resolution to ordinance appeal of public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office. No later than 2:00 PM, the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to address must be identified and retained to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given a proper note to the City Clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing, and then your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there would be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. Again, at this time, please put all cell phone electronic device on vibrator position or the off position. Thank you. Senator City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of March 28th and April 4th.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly move in second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? May it approve.
Communications from the Mayor's Office.
Good morning, Council President and other members of the council. I'll be providing the Mayor's comments this morning. If I could, could I have members of the Civitan Club, Randall Eckhoff, Sharon Eckhoff, Peggy Rendon, Jennifer Moreno, Jennifer Cooley, Roy Wood, Elaine Wood, and Mary Kelly meet me at the podium, please. The Mayor's left this proclamation and it reads as follows. Whereas Civitan International is the only major service organization serving people with intellectual and developmental disabilities through local projects, charitable events, and research funding. And whereas Cottage Hills Civitan Club was chartered in April of 1955, and for the last 68 years, they have worked to make the world a better place for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities in the greater Mobile area. And whereas Cottage Hills Civitan Club supports the Civitan International Research Center at the University of Alabama Birmingham, the First Light Community of Mobile, Morhane Home, Betty Walk, Camp Smile, Augusta Evans, Augusta Evans Special Schools, University of South Alabama, the Ark of Mobile County, the Special Olympics, and local junior civitan clubs. And whereas Cottage Hills Civitan Club encourages members in Mobile to donate their time, skills, and leadership to impact the lives of families and individuals with a variety of needs in our local area. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Civitan Awareness Month in the City of Mobile.
We would just like to thank the City Council and the Mayor of Mobile for this proclamation this morning. We've been at helping people in Mobile for a long time, especially those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. One of our projects in the last couple of years has been in conjunction with the University of South Alabama, a program called Passage USA, where they provide a two-year degree for folks that are handicapped, basically, but have an IQ of about 70 to 72. But they prepare them to go out and work, and we've been part of that, and we enjoy working with the university on that. We do lots of good things in Mobile, and we just appreciate being recognized this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll turn the podium over to Ms. Shonda Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works for the Awards of Employees of the Month. Good morning.
Good morning. Today, we will be honoring the employees of the month from our different divisions. Our first will be Ms. Kena Andrews, representing Ms. Ashley Adams.
When Ashley came in for her interview nearly five years ago, I asked her if she was up for a challenge, and luckily, she said yes. Ashley has made numerous improvements, including standardizing and organizing our physical and digital files, improving tracking of purchases and deliveries, and cross-training the public services support staff to increase operational resiliency. Ashley's positive attitude, vast array of skills, impeccable work ethic, and uncanny ability to handle multiple simultaneous tasks are among the reasons she is most deserving of this recognition.
I just want to say thank you for this award, and Kena has definitely provided a challenge. She doesn't let up on that, but it's always exciting. Thank you.
Next, for Public Works at Large, we will bring down Ms. Cassie to talk about Mr. Trevor Tate.
Good morning. I'm here to give the award to Trevor Tate for Public Works at Large, and I am, with me is his supervisors, Steve Clark and Cliff Thomas, who went on and on about what a great job that he has done, but also with us are three of Trevor's aunts and his Uncle Junior in the audience. So thank y'all for coming down. Trevor's been with the city for 15 years. He started out as an electrical trainee, moved up to electrician one, and is now an electrician two. He came to our department to help with building electrical and parks electrical, and also with special events about a year and a half ago. So if you've been to Rollmobil, or if you've been to the lighting of the Christmas trees, or any more numerous events, it's lit because of Trevor right here. He makes sure that there's power and things like that. And then the opposite happened on Thursday night when we were over at Hope Community Center, he doesn't want me to tell this, but we were at Hope Community Center for an event, and they were going to have another event as soon as the, as soon as the sun went down, and they wanted the lights to be out. And I didn't know exactly how to accomplish that, so I FaceTimed with Trevor, and he was able to turn the lights off for the exterior of the building so the kids could enjoy movies at the park. So thanks, Trevor.
I'd just like to say thank you. I'm surprised it's been 15 years, it went back kind of quick, 15 years this month. And first time in the city council. Pretty cool. Thank you.
Congratulations, Steve.
So for Parks and Recreation, we want to honor, come on down here, Shaquanda. We want to honor Shaquanda. She has been with Parks and Recreation for 15 years. She started off as a part-time childcare worker. She has a real passion for the therapeutics and the seniors. If you see her interact with them, she really has them showing out. Great customer service, dependable, always on time, and really helped with the, with the different populations. But if you saw the basketball group that comes here, Shaquanda works with them as well. And so she's always with them. If you see her around, she's always smiling, and it really makes a difference when working with that population, and if you see them, they love her. And so I appreciate it, and congratulations.
I want to say happy Tuesday, first of all. Happy Tuesday, everybody. Thank you again for allowing me to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
That concludes remarks from the Mayor's Office.
In accordance with 11-44C-22, in the, in the event of a vacancy on the council, accept those occurring less than one year prior to the date of the next regular council election shall be filled by a special election to be held for the purposes, the dates of which shall be set by the council on today. I believe we're going to go ahead and move, move up on the agenda.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to waive the rules in order to take Resolutions 27-413 and 414 out of order, with the rest continuing on as.
Second. And promptly move in second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Senator Clerk.
Resolutions 27, 413 and 414 declare a vacancy in Council District 6 and set July 25, 2023 as the date for the special election, and August 22, 2023 for a runoff election. 27, 414 appoint Lisa C. Lambert as Acting Chief Election Officer for the City of Mobile with regard to the forthcoming special municipal election and runoff for Council District 6.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly move in second and then discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, if I might, while we're talking about this, since there is a vacancy and we want to make sure that all of the residents in District 6 continue to get the services that they expect, as well as the communication, the council office, as well as the clerk, will be handling communications with the residents, will be sending out postcards to everybody in the district to let them know the dates of the election, so that they know that it is coming, as well as how to continue getting their 311, their service request orders filled, and if they need to speak with the councilperson or their community engagement staff, how to do that. So we will be watching out for all of those residents, so just stay tuned. We'll also be sending out newsletters with information, just like we have in the past. So just wanted to let you all know that, and of course, sending those postcards out will just help put into everybody's mind the date of the election, and we'll send out more than one.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave.
With respect to that item, just a question for the clerk. What is the, what will be the filing deadline for the election?
June 20.
June 20.
The first day to qualify is June 6.
June 6 through the 20th will be qualifying?
Yes.
And will we, will that be part of the communication we send out to the residents? Or, I guess, I'm not asking that we should, I'm just wondering. Want to get the information out, anybody who might be interested in the seat.
We'll have it posted on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Appeals. We have requests for waiver of the noise ordinance on April 15 at the Brad Mitchell Mansion, May 13 Black Lawn Street, and May 13 on Virginia Street.
So moved. Second. And promptly move in second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to declare structures at 1162 Fry Street, 217 Norman Street, 2209 Largo Avenue, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Just open up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? May to do so by coming down to the podium and stating your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Charles Cooper, addressed 7681 Creekwood Drive, Mobile, Alabama. 1162 Fry Street. I'm in total agreement that the house is a nuisance, and I also went through all the work to get the permit to get the house demolished, so right now, things are pending, so I'm waiting on that to be cleared, and hopefully, within the next 45, 60 days, we'll have the house demolished.
Mr. Cooper, at this morning's pre-council meeting, it was decided to grant a 60-day layover to give you the time to get the necessary documentation in place to move forward with it. So at that point in this meeting, I'll ask for a 60-day layover until you can get done what you need to, and if it doesn't happen after that, then we'll move forward. Thank you. No problem, man. Thank you for coming down.
All right. Is anyone else would like to address the council on these particular said items? If not. Okay. These public, these public hearings are closed.
Public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Comfort Transport LLC to operate a shuttle service.
Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this particular said item? Just open up the public hearing. Is anyone present? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Ben Harris.
Good morning. I'm Ben Harris, 203 South Georgia Avenue, 36604, in Councilman Carroll's District 2. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I want also to thank you for the vote that you took back in August on the redistricting. I personally think that was one of the most historic votes that I've seen in my many years of living in Mobile from this council. I think the creation of the fourth black majority district with effective voting majority is something that was a historic vote, and it was very important. I think it gives our community the chance to move forward, take another step toward being the vibrant community that we want it to be, the vibrant, diverse community that we want it to be. You've got another important vote. Your council, for whatever reason, this council is presented with some historic votes. Annexation is another one of those. I took the opportunity, I don't get all the information that you have, obviously, but I took the opportunity to watch the meeting of the Committee of the Whole yesterday, heard lots of good questions asked, heard questions about the timing and the extent of the benefits, whether the large city designation would come before 2030, for example. Another question that I have is what annexation will do to the redistricting map? Will the fourth black majority district be maintained at the voting percentages that it currently is? I think that's a very, very important question. I have not seen any information on that. It may be out there, but I haven't seen it. I would urge you to release that information if it's available. I would urge you to make sure that you have it, that you consider, I do some work with the Mobile County Democratic Party, so to a degree, I study election returns the way that you all do. We know a voting age majority is different than a voting age plurality. A voting age population majority is different than a population majority. The voting age population majority is what makes an effective voting majority. I urge you, please, to consider and do all that you can to preserve the fourth black majority district. That was a historic vote, please do not undo it. Please take the time to make a considered decision about how you proceed on annexation. This is a vote that will have lasting impact, just like the redistricting vote was. Please take the time, give it the consideration that it deserves, do all that you can, please, to preserve the fourth black majority district, and to the extent possible, if you're going to vote for annexation, preserve the black voting majority citywide where you, where it is right now. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Beverly Cooper. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here today, sir. All right. Beverly Cooper, 1208 Pelmetto Street, District 2. I'm here today to speak on behalf of Stand Up Mobile about the release of the Mayor's study on his annexation proposals and next step in this process. For months, the community has been waiting for the administration and the council to release details on the proposal, because all that was made publicly available were formatted with a little, with very little accompanying demographic information. The decision this council makes on annexation will have a tremendous impact on the trajectory of the community and the city. This is why it is one of the most utmost importance that we get this process right. So here we go again. And we can only get it right through a full and thorough vetting of any and all information to ensure we fully understand the impact an annexation could have on Mobile. It is helpful that the Mayor's study has been released, although it must be said that it was deeply troubling that when it was first released, there was an effort, it seemed to confuse the citizens about the content of the study regarding its impact on the city's demographics. The study's reliance on broad statements, information only from the administration, and lack of specifics, to me, was a bit troubling, and it makes the work of this council's vetting that study and getting the answers we actually need even more difficult. Yesterday's committee, committee's meeting was a start where there is a lot more that we need to get to the bottom of, and I believe that there are many more decisions to be made. For example, one of the greatest concerns that the community has is the need to take care and invest in the city we already have, before going out and bringing in new responsibilities. Every week, this council votes to condemn and tear down homes, often in some of our most historic and underserved communities. The city's population can be increased by making affordable housing a priority and bringing back those residents that we moved out of the city limits when public housing was destroyed. Before we make decisions about bringing in new areas, can PFM take a look at the financial impact of investing in the areas within the current city, city's footprint, where residential growth is possible? And we aren't talking about a few hundred thousand dollars or a million here or there. We're talking about a true concerted effort and investment to breathe new life into long ignored communities. Another important question that has been, remained unanswered, is what is the actual timeline for when these areas would supposedly be taken into other municipalities? We keep being told that there's a great urgency, but there's little to no evidence that a boxed-in community could happen anytime soon. At the same time, we're hearing that the population changes do not actually take effect until 2030. There are just too many questions, and there are many more that need to be answered. We urge you to get the answers, and we certainly urge you to consider waiting until every district has representation sitting before you, before an enormous decision like this can be made by the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Reverend Dr. W.A. James.
Good morning. Pastor W.A. James, 1408 Dr. MLK Junior Avenue, District 2. I'm here to speak about annexation. As you know, I've been here over the past couple of months to urge you all to be transparent and honest in the discussion surrounding annexation. This is essential because only through transparency and honesty, we can overcome the laden distrust which exists in too many of our communities. Right now, unfortunately, it seems to be going in the opposite direction. As you know, when the Mayor's Office released the assumed study last week, it is stated that the study confirmed both that proposed annexations would preserve Mobile's status as a black majority city, ensure the voting age population, enforce of Mobile's seven council districts, which remains majority minority. But again, as we know, it did not happen. This study did not look at the demographics of the annexations. The local media, I'm told, checked with the Mayor's Office on this, and there was no analysis of that in the study. This brings about an effort to mislead our residents and communities into thinking it did. It undermines communities' trust in statements made and information provided. Let's get to the bottom of why such statements, why the guise, why the guise of our citizens and representation in city government. Citizens deserve to know the truth and confide in the words in those we have elected to represent our interests in city government. Thank you very much.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Senator City Clerk. Greetings, everybody. Reggie Hill, 1007 Sinister Street. While monuments of international influence before removed discreetly, of course, have stood on government and royal, the true outlaw, refined in a sense, has always been on water. Water is the source of our world-renowned namesake. While the zealous Six Flags hold truly significant regards here, the port remains the root of our city. So when this, water, has defined us since the inception of our municipality, imagine people having access to water, of all things, abruptly taken away. Sadly, again, we don't have to ponder on such things when annexation and rules of procedure are right here before us. Again, things just abruptly being taken away. I rise today to share thoughts, uh, I know we all should consider, about growing the city while still knowing our worth. Last week, um, I also provided specific questions. You know, we've done this in the past, too, that's why it's a little shocking, all this extra emphasis about submitting things, we don't have anything to show, as an example, that's why we should do it. If we're going to submit to what we've seen before us today, we're gonna have to move a lot differently. Yesterday, there was a meeting which talked about annexation. We have an example of redistricting. Why should you be shocked that we did not trust the process when the week before you changed the map? We were gonna ask the question yesterday how we can get a projected number in population, and then we say ten years later, we're gonna have fewer people, but we're going to exceedingly increase the revenue we bring in? How is that possible? We're going to decrease the number of people, but the revenues are going to increase. All right. We don't have anything that as well will tell us about the majority remaining what it is. How we had this example, the same way with redistricting. Yesterday, it was a question of how are we gonna keep that majority in place for the voting age population? This is on the record. One last thing while the time is here, because we're gonna have to keep coming back this. In section two six two, it says, and this is to the rules of procedure, interested parties are the authorized representatives wishing to address this body. Wishing. Now, that's not seeking, looking, hoping for, expecting, predicting, it says wishing. When we go to the dictionary, wishing tells us that's something that's what can probably happen, so we need to have the ability to go forward. That is an infringement on our First Amendment right, because it grants us the right to petition there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
My, uh, request an extra minute, because this, once again, will prove what is actually going on as well, and I'll only take a brief second to summarize this.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Thank, thank you, Mr. Hill.
Consent resolutions held over. Thirty-seven, three forty-two, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor class one license to Busy Bee Hookah and Ice Bar Lounge on Highway Ninety.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly move in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over. Zero one, three eighty-four, authorize agreement with Fire Technico fireworks for display. Zero eight, three eighty-six, approve purchase order to Gray Bar Electric Company for streetlight poles and arms. Zero eight, three eighty-seven, approve purchase order to Gray Bar Electric for streetlight poles with twelve-foot truss arms. Zero eight, three eighty-eight, approve purchase order to Best Price Services for ditch cleaning services. Zero eight, three eighty-nine, authorize purchase order to cone ink for materials and assembly of skirt brush on cruise terminal elevators. Zero eight, three ninety, approve purchase order to NEC Corporation of America for smart scan fingerprint identification hardware and software. Twenty-one, three ninety-one, authorize contract with Best Price Services for right-of-way mowing at DIP and Cypher Shores. Twenty-one, three ninety-two, authorize contract with PPM Consultants for fueling system work at Motor Pool and City Garage.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly move in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinances being introduced for the first time, eighty-eight, zero eighteen.
Our council rules these ordinances will be laid over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, forty, three ninety-four through sixty, four oh two.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read?
Second.
And promptly move in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Run clerk.
Forty, three ninety-four, declare the structure at eleven sixty-two Fry Street a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Motion to lay over sixty days.
Second.
And promptly move in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll just lay it over sixty days.
Forty, three ninety-five, three ninety-six, are declaring the structures at two seventeen Norman Street, twenty-two oh-nine Largo Avenue, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Fifty-eight, three ninety-seven, authorize removal of weed group sixteen forty-one. Sixty, three ninety-eight, three ninety-nine, and four hundred are approving, award a special bonus to the public services employee of the month, public works-at-large employee of the month, and parks and recreation employee of the month. Sixty, four zero one, four zero two, are determining appropriations to Just For Developmental Lab and the Dearborn Hymca serves a public purpose and approving payment.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly move in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced, zero one, four zero three through sixty, four twelve.
Our council rules these resolutions will be laid over for one week.
Announcements.
Uh, District Two, uh, Councilman Carroll.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, um, on next Tuesday, April the eighteenth, at the Texas Street Recreation Center, or at, as we now call it, the James Seals Community Center, will be a meeting on the PFM information and annexation. This meeting will be one of possibly two that will be district-wide. So, um, I ask that if you are interested, please attend, uh, the administration will be there, I'll be there, uh, hopefully, uh, a couple of others, but this meeting will be solely, solely about annexation and no other issue at that time, uh, the eighteenth of April. Uh, also, information on the time will be posted on, uh, my Facebook page. It's posted twice a week. It goes out via text once a week. It is also, uh, listed on the city's website, so it's listed in a number of places, so please stay tuned so that you are apprised again of the time and also reminded. That is April eighteenth, six P.M., the James Seal Recreation Center, or as we call it, that grew up in the area, Texas Street Park. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Carroll. District Four, Councilman Reynolds. District One, Councilman Pan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On April the fourteenth, this Friday, we'll be having a, um, Tomerville Neighborhood Cleanup Day, uh, with myself and the mayor, leadership team. We've been working in the Tomerville community with Revitalize Tomerville. We've been meeting and planning, and this is one of the things that we're working on, um, in the Tomerville neighborhood, uh, we've been working on a plan, we're excited about that, it's been over a year, and so we're, um, excited about the things that are taking place, and, and so this is one of the things, is working together to create a, uh, a pride, um, of course, in the Tomerville community, and, and so we want to show them and, and let them see the leaders in the community. Um, on April the twenty-fifth, we will also have our annexation meeting regarding, um, any topics, any questions, um, the administration will be there, um, and it will be sit for District One, so we're inviting everyone in the District One community to come out to Dumas Wesley at six P.M., April the twenty-fifth, at six P.M., um, if you have any questions, and again, this is regarding annexation, and come out. Thank you again, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Pan. District Five, Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. On April, Monday, April twenty-fourth, at six o'clock P.M. at E.R. Dixon School on the corner of Bitten Spur Road and University Boulevard, I will host the second, uh, meeting for interested citizens on the McGregor, the South McGregor Widening Project. This particular meeting, uh, will be to show interested residents and citizens how the, um, how the new, uh, street and the sidewalks will fit into the existing landscape. Uh, there'll be, uh, the project will be superimposed on a Google Earth view of that area, and so people will be able to see, again, how the, how the project will fit into the existing landscape. And we'll have, uh, we'll have representatives from city engineering there to answer any questions. Uh, this is just to see how it's gonna fit in, it's not a design meeting. The design is completed. This is just, uh, so people can see how it's gonna fit into the existing landscape. And again, is April twenty-fourth, it's a Monday at six o'clock P.M. at E.R. Dixon School, corner of Bitten Spur and University. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Dave. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
No announcements, thank you.
Uh, thank you, and to the residents of District Three, I'd like to, I thank all the residents that's had, came out on last Thursday to the Revelation Baptist Church. Uh, we had a mixture of District Two and District Three residents that was there, and, um, District Two residents, we did, took your concerns, uh, came brought, brought back to City Hall. Mostly that was people had, was wanting, was pretty much, you know, repair in the sidewalk, uh, drainage, uh, and some dog issues. Uh, we still having a lot of dog issues in the community. Um, not too sure what's the plans, you know, you know, in the future, but from, even across from District Three to District Two to District Four, you know, we're still getting a lot of calls, but I'd just know in the future, not today, you know, what's our plans as a city, because, um, several topics came up on last week dealing with, people dealing with dogs and everything, and we need really need addressed as a city. Also, I would like to, uh, thank all the citizens that had came out on last Saturday to Gilroy Elementary School, um, despite of the weather, I thought we were gonna have a rainout Easter egg hunt, but, uh, the Lord allowed us to have a beautiful Easter egg hunt on last Saturday, uh, ended up being a beautiful Easter egg hunt with hundreds of people out to attend. I'd like to thank, uh, Franklin Primary Health, also like to thank, um, the ladies of Death to Semetheta, also the men of Capal Passai, and also Judge, uh, Shabana Hall and Chris Aldrich for, um, participating and volunteering for our annual Easter egg hunt. It was a great success. Uh, then I think it was gonna turn out as well as it did, but it turned out really good, and again, I do appreciate all the citizens, and pretty much everyone who came out had fun, and also plenty of food and drinks, and when also, of course, we have plenty of Easter eggs with the Easter bun, again, thanks to everyone who participated. Also, citizens of, uh, District Three, especially the South DIP Inn, on April the twentieth, uh, we will have our TIP meeting and also Revitalize the DIP meeting. Uh, we invited all the residents on the South DIP to come out to the Riverside Baptist Church, again, that will be on Thursday, April the twentieth, at six o'clock P.M. And, uh, every resident should have received a card in the mail, but we invited all the residents and all the businesses to come down on April the twentieth to talk about the TIP and improvement of revitalizeing, um, DIP. Also, on Thursday, April the twenty-seventh, um, will be our annexation meeting. It was not last Thursday, and it would not be on April the twentieth, it would be on April the twenty-seventh, uh, on that Thursday. Uh, we have a couple places that we trying to choose in between, but on next Tuesday, I'm planning on making that announcement of the place where the annexation meeting will be held, but again, that will be on Thursday, April the twenty-seventh. Is there anything else from this council?
Uh, Mr. President, I'd just like to piggyback on the dogs, um, Wanaker Avenue, please, there are those four dogs out there that are kind of, uh, uh, on a stray mission, uh, people called last night, oh, no, not last night, two days ago, uh, I think it was Monday, the day after Easter Sunday, so if you would, Wanaker Avenue, there are four actual dogs out there that are roaming pretty strong. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else from this council? Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, may I promptly move in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?